Flo, whenever you're ready. Okay. Okay, good morning. It is 9:36 and I'm calling this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order. Please ask our clerk to call the roll to establish a quorum and read the Metro Cable statement and meeting procedures.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy? Oh, excuse me. Kennedy will not be present today. Frost?
Here.
Hume?
In the nick of time.
Desmond?
Here.
You have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 9th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per off-agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or off-agenda matter and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record, and the clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda or off-agenda item. Clerk staff will transfer each caller into the meeting, and we appreciate your patience as the hold time may be extended for a period of time. You may also send written comments to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff or assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you, Flo. I'd ask Supervisor Serna, please stand and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Serna, and thank all of you for being with us today. We are going to start with our off-agenda public comments, and for those of you who have been here for a while, you kind of understand that we're trying to get as much of the off-agenda done in the first 30 minutes as possible. If we cannot get through all of the off-agenda, both in-person, on the phone, within 30 minutes, then I'm going to hold the off-agenda public comments till the end of the meeting. And just for those of you who don't know, just to clarify, off-agenda public comments are, just as they sound, they're for items that are not specifically on the agenda, either as a consent item or a timed item on the calendar today. So we'll start with off-agenda for 30 minutes, and I'll turn it over to our clerk to call the first off-agenda commenter.
Okay, our first person is Sarah Matson.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Matson, and I'm from Sacramento County.
Oh, sorry, there we go.
Ah, and I'm from your district, District 3. So this letter that I'm going to start reading was originally sent on May 24th, and I wanted to make it official part of the record, so I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to reference the letter. As a county resident and representative of the state of New California, a "We the People" movement for the preservation of the republic guaranteed to citizens by the United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, by this letter, I am notifying all County Board of Supervisors, our sheriff, our registrar of voters, today that you must first and foremost prioritize protecting our national security during any future elections. It is imperative that we comply with the implementation of security measures to protect the sovereign right of each eligible citizen to have an authentic outcome when casting a vote in our elections. Back in 2017, the U.S. Secretary of Homeland Security issued a statement clearly designating elections' infrastructure as critical infrastructure. Election infrastructure is critical infrastructure for the obvious reason that elections have a major impact on national security. It's vital that the state of California complies with the inherent intent from the federal government and works to ensure a system of cybersecurity and oversight is established within every political subdivision. Every component of the election system used in our county must have safeguards in place to prevent any attacks which threaten our national security. Secure elections are the protected right of every eligible citizen, and as an incumbent and our representatives to exercise their authority, see no electronic voting system in the county is used as the primary method for counting, tabulating, or verifying federal elections.
Ma'am, could you please wrap up your comments?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time, and it will continue, and I just ask that you consider your oath of office in protecting the people of your county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Lynn Reeves.
I'm Lynn Reeves, and I also live in Sacramento County. I'm going to continue with Sarah's letter. The federal government has made it very clear that election equipment is considered a target by those who want to threaten the safety and security of our country. Electronic voting systems that contain components that are made with parts produced in countries considered adversaries to the United States must never be used as the primary method for conducting elections in our county, state, or country. More alarming, the components of their systems include embedded modems, circuitry, motherboard, and a size of a pencil point that is made in China, a nation adversarial to the United States and breaches our security to elections. Overall, I really call upon the Board members, our sheriff, our registrar of voters, to act on behalf of the safety and welfare of your citizenry as the representatives who, by oath of office, committed to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and stated that you made the obligation freely. Your position requires that you need concerns of malicious cyber-enabled activities and recognize the immediate need for security by eliminating the use of these voting machines from our elections with the upcoming federal election of 2024. Thank you for your time. You must understand that all of the election machines that we use in our state are made with parts that come from countries that are adversarial to our nation, which really makes it a security situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and next we have Jim Reeves.
I'm also with Rich Desmond's district. I'm here to give you Title 18 USC, Section 242, the consequences of violation of civil liberties. Section 242, Title 18, makes it a crime for a person to act under color of any law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege prompted or protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States, and this includes a legitimate voting process. For the purpose of Section 242, acts under color of law include not only done by federal, state, or local officials within their lawful authority, but also acts done beyond the bounds of that of the official's lawful authority. If the acts are done while the official is purporting to be or pretending to act in the performance of his/her official duties, persons acting under the color of law within the meaning of the statute include police officers, prison guards, and other law enforcement officials, as well as judges, care providers in public health facilities, and others who are acting as public officials. It is not necessary that the crime be motivated by animus toward the race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin of the victim. The offense is punishable by a range of imprisonment, up to life term or the death penalty, depending upon the circumstances of the crime and the resulting injury of any. Title 18 USC, Section 242, whoever, under color of any law, statute, ordinance, regulation, or custom willfully subjects any person in any state, territory, commonwealth, possession, or district to the deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunities secured or protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States shall be fined under the title or imprisoned not more than one year or both, and if bodily injury results from the acts committed in violation of this section, or if such acts include the use, attempted use, or threatened use of a dangerous weapon, explosives, or fire shall be fined under this title or imprisoned not more than 10 years or both, and if death results from the acts committed in violation of this section.
Mr. Reeves, will you wrap up your comments, please?
I guess I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Madam Clerk, I see we have five more in the queue in person, so I'd ask you to shut off the in-person queue for off-agenda, and how many on the phone do we have at this point?
We have at least one caller on the phone.
Okay, well, let's close the queue for off-agenda for the phone as well.
Okay, Ryan Haritz.
Hume, you was late, man.
I was.
You the newest member?
I know.
You already getting that relaxed?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so they say if you don't have anything good to say, don't say anything at all, so that's why I didn't come to these last couple of meetings, and that's probably why you guys remain quiet for so much stuff. Not to mention, last time I was here, the four, the five of you showed that you were racist and supported racism. But nonetheless, I'm here, the reason I was pretty mad also is because for months, you guys made these people with disabilities come down here and talk to you guys and plead to you guys for more money to help them and help them help people for months, but the same day, you guys found out about getting a raise, you guys voted that in, the very same day. And I believe it was you, Phil Serna, who pointed it out and said to Ann Edwards, your guys' county executive officer, "Oh, you mean, none of the Board members knew you were researching this, correct?" And you all said, "Correct." So now it makes me wonder why you deserve a raise if you don't even know what your employees are doing with their time or with our time and our money, but you guys get more money. I guess as long as you guys keep getting paid, it's okay, right? Think so. It just amazes me that. Nonetheless, 36% at that, you guys decided to give yourself a 36% raise when you don't know what your employees are doing, and for those that don't know who Ann Edwards is, she's your guys' county executive officer. She usually sits over here, but she did say a lot of heinous things towards me, which ended up putting my life in jeopardy, and when I brought it to their attention, I noticed when I come to these meetings, she hides in the back until I'm done and I leave, and then she comes out here. So I don't know if she'll come out today. I know they did change her plaque over here, it used to be over here, but she might come out later, but you might notice it in the next meetings, or they may keep her in the back where she belongs. I don't know. But again, you guys are important enough to give you a raise the first day you hear about it.
Ryan, will you please wrap up your comments?
But you may still wait till December, from December until now, and still, it's not right.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Kevin Carter.
Excuse me, clerk. I would like to give you these members, thank you. Good morning. I'm Brother Carter of the Poor People's Campaign, a national call for moral revival. I'm here on behalf of the caregivers, but before we speak about the caregivers, I want to speak about the giving of care to them from you. Just hearing the last speaker who just said that you guys received a raise, when will you raise their raises so that they will not be living in poverty or below the poverty line? The information that you have received is called the Third Reconstruction. I would like for you guys to read that very carefully because that's also in Washington, DC, that's led by Congresswoman Barbara Lee. And at this time, we have a delegation of 30 people from the state of California that will be going up to Washington, DC from June 18th to the 22nd for Moral Congress, asking for the same thing, and we would like for you to ask for the same thing, too, to read this reconstruction so that we, this third reconstruction, so that we can get back to the regulations of society today and start taking care of humanity's best workers, best people that give the best services. They're here behind you, they're all moral witnesses to what we're doing here today. I cannot speak for them, but I can come here and support them. You have to hear their testimonies and take those testimonies in to the truths that they hold, just as well as the documentation that I gave you, and I ask and urge you to please give that full consideration that you gave yourselves to give raises to. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
And then next we have Francisco Garcia.
Good morning, Supervisors and staff. My name is Francisco Garcia. I'm on the E-Board for Unite Here Local 49 Hotel Restaurant Union. I'm also Vice President of Sacramento LACLA, which is Labor Council for Latin American Advancement, and I'm here in support of the IHSS providers in their struggle for a better standard of living. I'm not going to be rude or anything, but this Board did give themselves a raise, and I feel that it's time to share the wealth, and I'm just going to ask you to do all you can for these people because it's a hard job that they do, but it's very important because eventually, all of us are going to come to an age where we might need that support. But once again, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Andrea Noble.
Hi. Hi, good morning. I'm Andrea Noble. I'm a home care worker for the last 16 years. The need to keep people with disability and elderly people in their home with dignity and respect is a human right. The death toll for putting them in a facility is huge, plus it's cost-cut, plus it's eight times more expensive to be put in a facility. I took care of my ex-mother-in-law so she could stay at home. I wasn't able to get another job because she was my job. I paid my bills and took care of my children with the money I earned from IHSS. Yesterday at bargaining, your team offered 25 cents every year for over four years. That is not going to pay our bills with the cost of living going up, rent, gas, plus food. I understand you guys got a raise, and I understand why you are one of the lowest-paid boards in the region. That is the same reason I'm here today, to ask for my fellow home care workers. With the cost of living going up higher, 25 cents each year will not pay our bills. We are healthcare workers. We deserve to be treated with dignity and respect, so we are here today to ask you to speak to the county about offering us what we all know we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Jesus Figueroa Cacho.
Good morning to all the Board. Thank you very much for having me here. My name is Jesus Figueroa Cacho. I am resident of Sacramento, District 5. I am a healthcare provider and work countless hours to care for clients. I am here to urge the Board that all can show to Sacramento why healthcare providers matters, why with the current wages we have is not enough to survive. We pick up multiple jobs just to make ends meet, so please, I'm asking you guys, to all the members in this rooms, to get us a better contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, one more? Yes.
Joe Romero.
Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to add one more. Thank you, County Supervisor, staff, and all the members behind me. I'm with a sister local, SEIU 1000. My name is Joe Romero. I'm an organizer for the workers of the state of California, and I'm just here to stand up for our IHSS workers in Sacramento County. You know, pay increases has kind of like been the general conversation that I've been having this last year with our state workers, and I know the pain is being felt throughout the other unions, so that's why we're fighting. We're here today to, you know, ask for increases. You know, we're asking for 30% increases, and so just to match with inflation, to match with COVID, you know, a lot of these contracts were written before COVID was in existence. So now, we have to take into that reality that people need more pay, you know, people need to be taken care of. You know, we need to take care of the people that are taking care of the vulnerable, the weak and the sick, the elderly, so I'm just here to advocate for them and just to hopefully, you know, you could advocate for them as well, and thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe, and not as a, you know, direct comment or exchange with you, but I just wanted to say for all the IHSS workers who've been out here every week coming to the Board meeting, I just want to thank you, thank you for the work you do, certainly. Just so you know, we are, as you know, we are right now at the negotiating table, and then at some point, we'll come back to this Board to take action. So I just want to, I just want to, again, thank you, you know, for your advocacy, thank you for the work you do, and we certainly see you and hear you from up here on this dais.
Okay, we have one caller, and so I'm going to ask Tamika to transfer the caller, please. Hi, caller, please start with your comments, and you have two minutes.
I really don't like calling into this chamber just because I know, like, the five of you really just aren't listening at this point. You are, like, there are dozens of people that come in every meeting to basically ask for basic cost of living adjustments and to be paid less than poverty wages, and you have more than enough money to do that, and yet your priorities consistently are misaligned or just outright opposed to providing for, like, the basic thing that all Sacramento residents are looking for, which is the priority of their health, of their, of their rights and well-being as a whole, and we instead prioritize protecting your comfort, which at this point, you are now, like, which is what you did last week or the other week when you gave yourselves a $46,000 pay raise. Just so everybody in the public knows, Sacramento County Board of Supervisors are not underpaid. They are actually quite well-paid. In fact, all of them are making no less than $150,000 every year in total pay and benefits for in public records. So that $46,000 pay raise that you all approved for yourselves is going to put you on par with the likes of communities like Orange County, where they're making no less than $233,000 to do this move. And what do we get for that investment besides just abject disrespect when you change the public meeting procedures to stifle public dissent and limit our ability to actually engage with this Board, or just reject and flout grand jury recommendations, some of which have found that you have provided gross, abject dereliction of duty when it comes to management of, during emergency situations like the COVID, like the COVID emergency, or actually housing, like, allowing your county to house young people, foster youth in your jail facility, and also that you have no-
Can you wrap up your comments, please? You are at your two minutes.
You have no plan for remedying the consent decree violations that your sheriff's department has been doing.
Thank you.
So many things that you could be doing.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Okay, that concludes your comments for off-agenda.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, and we'll move on to our consent calendar, items 2 through 45.
Yes, for 2 through 45, I have a couple of notes. For item 30, I do need a motion for the Board to continue this item to June 13th. This is the authorization to execute an agreement with Elk Grove Adult and Community Education for Instructional Services in the amount of $513,166 for the period of July 1 through June 30th. I also need a motion to continue another item, and so we can do that at one time. Item 31, this is continuing to June 13th as well. This is the authorization to execute an agreement with Man Alive Sacramento for the inmate reentry services program.
Chair, I'd move to continue items 1331 to the June 13th meeting.
Okay, please vote.
A unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay.
And that concludes my notes. You also, the county executive will like to make an announcement for item 5 after-
Item 5?
Yeah.
Why don't we take that first before I go to the Supervisors for comment?
Okay, let me read that into the record. This is the authorization to appoint Chad Ryan as the Director of Finance.
Good morning, Supervisors. David Villanueva, your Assistant County Executive. With the item, the action that you're considering for item number 5, you are appointing a new Director of Finance to join the amazing team of department heads that we currently have. I'm pleased to introduce Chad Rindi as the new Director of Finance. Chad has worked with Yolo County for, since 2015, and his roles have included Assistant Chief Financial Officer, the interim county administrator, the Assistant County Administrator, and his current position is Chief Financial Officer. And before joining Yolo County, Chad worked with an auditing firm whose, where his focus was around local government audits, so he has a huge experience with local government and the functions of the Department of Finance. Chad is also a certified public accountant, and he earned his degree from, right here in our backyard at California State University Sacramento. While at Yolo County, he's also earned several leadership awards focusing on teamwork and responsibility, and he's also part of their mentoring program there at Yolo County. Before Chad makes his comments, I do want to express my sincere appreciation for Joyce Rindicent, who is currently the Deputy Director of Finance and interim, has been the interim county, or Director of Finance since Ben Lamera's retirement in early March. So Joyce has done an excellent job in preparing and keeping that department running, and I just want to thank her for the position that she's taken and helped us with that. So with that, Chad Rindi.
So before you start, Chad, thank you, David, and thank you for calling out Joyce. And Chad, welcome, and just remember, your remarks, the vote hangs in the balance depending on your remarks right now, so.
Well, no pressure. You've added to my nerves this morning. Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the Board. I'm really appreciative for this opportunity to be appointed and to lead the Department of Finance here at Sacramento County. My family and I have lived in Sacramento County. We're longtime residents of District 4 out in Orangevale, and it's really been a goal of mine. I've had the opportunity to serve Yolo County as their Chief Financial Officer for five years, and it's been a goal for to serve my own community, and I'm glad that the stars have aligned and this opportunity has come together to work closely with all of you, with the amazing leadership team that we have here at Sacramento County, and with all of the professional staff within the Department of Finance. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I hope you will vote yes before I have to drive across the river and put in my resignation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad, and welcome. Any comments from my colleagues on item 5? Okay, thank you. Then we will go to other Supervisor comments. I'll start with Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair Desmond. I just wanted to quickly congratulate the Antelope P-Bid for their renewal, item 17. I know-
Do you want to have Madam Clerk read that into the record?
Sure.
Item 17?
Item 17 is the Antelope Property and Business Improvement District adoption, adopt resolution of the intention to renew the district.
You know, since we started the Antelope P-Bid, everything is better. They've done a lot to clean up the commercial district, and I know how much work goes into the renewal process while they're still doing all the work in the P-Bid, and I just wanted to congratulate them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have questions on items 13 and 16.
Okay, for, I'm going to read both of them, if you don't mind, Mr. Serna. For item 13, this is the contract for the Warren- For item 13, this is the Contract for the Warreni Thornton Youth Center remodel facility to accommodate behavioral health, children's crisis stabilization unit psychiatric health facility program. And 16, you said?
Correct.
16 is authorize the Director of Airports to negotiate and execute the agreement for executive capital program management consulting services with Answer Advisory Consulting.
So as it relates to my question on item 13, I just need someone, perhaps Siobhan is the appropriate member of our executive team to address it. But I just want to make sure that this action today is not connected in any way to what has been in the news, obviously, in recent weeks as it relates to the wet center being used as a kind of an emergency interim destination for our foster youth.
Thank you for the opportunity. You are correct. This is not related in any way. So the Warreni Thornton Youth Center, we intend to put two projects in there through behavioral health. One is a crisis stabilization unit for youth and one is a psychiatric health facility. But in no way will serve the same youth population. We have other plans to move those youth out of the wet center.
Thank you for that. And then as it relates to item 16, I had a question during my briefing yesterday, generally wanting to know what constitutes what I consider to be a fairly sizable maximum payment amount of $30 million. I don't know that I received a response on that. So I'm looking at you, Mr. Villanueva.
Supervisor Serna, we did provide a response
Did you?
What I thought was your question as to whether this was a percentage of the contract or time and materials, and it is time and material.
Time and materials, okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Serna. I don't see any other board members with comments, so we'll go to public comment for consent.
Yes, so it doesn't look like we have any comments in person, so we'll close the in-person public comments. But we do have a caller on the phone for item number four, and I'll go ahead and read that into the record. That is the County of Sacramento Community Facilities Districts provide for the levy of fiscal year 2023, '24 special taxes for 12 community facilities districts. So James, if you could transfer the caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Do I start now?
Yes, please.
Karen Klinger calling to talk about agenda item number four. This is on the agenda back in 2021 to, oh, by the way, I oppose this increase in parcel tax when Sacramento County Water Agency Community Facility Districts 40 and 41 are creating, when they are creating a special assessment tax. What will that take? A vote of the people before they can start to borrow the 95 million against our communities? This is somewhat complicated and why I tuned into agenda item number four to make sure was it included in the 12 community facility districts? And the one I'm talking about is Districts 40 and 41. And how will we know how this will be handled? Will it be handled with a vote of the people and a parcel tax against our home, our private property parcels? And I would also like to ask for a copy of the boundary of Districts 40 and 41 with Sacramento County Water Agency. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the comments and we've closed the queue.
Okay. And I would say for anybody who has questions about that item, certainly there's, there's a lot of detail there. Make contact with my office. I'm happy to connect you with county staff to answer some of those questions. Okay. And with consent, it for consent, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move consent.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Okay, unanimous vote with the exception of items 30 and 31. Those were taken separately and unanimous vote with those members present.
And you made it Chad. Congratulations. Okay, I'll move, we'll move on to item 46.
Okay, for item 46, this is the Presentation of Resolution Honoring the Sacramento Chargers Sports Team on Their 40th Anniversary.
Good morning Chair Desmond, members of the board, County Exec Staff, Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks. We are here today to celebrate a monumentous occasion. This is the 40th anniversary of our Chargers Special Olympics team. And we have a few of our members here in the audience. You guys want to stand up? Come on down. So this was established in 1983, which means they've been rocking and rolling since some of us were in elementary school or older. But, or younger actually, probably some of you. But this is just really exciting. We started out with 45 athletes. We now have about 150 athletes. And so we just wanted to bring everyone forward so that you could say congratulations to them and give them a great county welcome. And we do have a fancy resolution. If Chair Desmond, you want to present that?
I won't shake hands with everyone yet. I'll wait till we have the photo op and my colleagues all come down here, we can all shake hands together. This is very exciting for me in particular to be presenting this resolution on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. I've done a lot of work with the Special Olympics and just, it's just amazing, the athletes and the work that you do. And to honor our Sacramento County Chargers is just a great opportunity. The, I'll do an abbreviated, I won't read the entire resolution, but a few highlights of the resolution. The Sacramento County Chargers was formed in 1983 as a sports training team providing opportunities for training and competitions, which are generally hosted by Special Olympics or VIP, very inspirational people, for teams throughout Sacramento County. In the first year, 45 athletes participated on different teams in track and field, bowling, basketball, swimming and softball. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I would like to recognize and celebrate the Sacramento County Chargers and all of you, all of the athletes, on your 40th anniversary of the team's formation. Congratulations. And this is a resolution from, from me and my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, and I would ask my colleagues to please come down for a photograph.
We're going to go over here on this side.
And I apologize, I got ahead of myself in case any of my colleagues had any comments you wanted to make about the Chargers, but certainly no pressure.
I just commented Supervisor Serna that it just makes me feel a little bit old that 1983 was 40 years ago.
Okay.
We do not have any public comments.
No public comments on 46?
No, I'm going to close the queue on that.
All right, so we'll move on to item 47.
Okay. Item 47 is the Presentation of Resolution of the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, Proclaiming June 19 through the 23rd of 2023 as Environmental Health Week.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning Chair Desmond and members of the board. My name is Jania Monasterio and I'm the Director of the Environmental Management Department. Today, we would like to present a resolution proclaiming June 19 through June 23rd as Environmental Health Week. This proclamation represents the hard work and dedication of environmental health professionals as they protect public health and the environment through the various health programs. The presentation this morning will be given by Megan Floyd. She is a supervising environmental health specialist with the Environmental Management Department, and she also is the President-elect of the California Environmental Health Association, also known as SEHA. And with that, I'd like to turn this over to Megan.
Welcome Megan.
Thank you, Jania. Good morning Chair Desmond and members of the board. I'm Megan Floyd. I'm a supervising environmental health specialist for the water protection programs at EMD and also the President-elect for the California Environmental Health Association. I refer to as SEHA. SEHA is dedicated to improving the quality of life and health through environmental education and protection. SEHA Vision Statement is providing the wellbeing of all Californians through environmental protection and enhancement in our homes, communities, workplaces, recreational areas, informing a healthful environment for enjoying the never-ending miracle that is California. The Sacramento County Environmental Management Department, in conjunction with the Superior Chapter of SEHA, will host the 71st Annual Educational Symposium, or AES, June 19 through the 23rd, located at the Holiday Inn at 300 J Street in downtown Sacramento. This site was chosen to highlight the diversity of Sacramento from the old Sacramento River Front up to the modern areas of Doco and the Golden One Center. The AES will bring together environmental health professionals throughout the state from federal, local, state and tribal governments, members of academia and industry representatives. The AES will highlight various environmental health topics such as retail food, recreational health, liquid waste, drinking water, hazardous materials, hazardous waste and many more. On behalf of the SEHA Executive Board and EMD, I would like to thank the nine volunteers that have countless hours towards putting this event together over the last year and a half. At this time, I'd like to invite Chair Desmond down to read the proclamation at the floor. And I would encourage you all to participate with your commemorative pins the week of June 19 through the 23rd, 2023, as Environmental Health Week.
Well, thank you Megan, and I'm delighted to present this resolution. If you want to stand yours, I'm, and I'll read some excerpts from the resolution. The protection of public health and the environment is a top priority for the continued progress and prosperity of all residents within the state of California. By acknowledging and respecting our responsibility to protect public health and the environment, we can demonstrate our commitment to the protection of public health and the wellbeing of all citizens. Only through collaborative efforts of the government, industry and environmental health professionals can we move forward in our attempts to protect the environment and public health on a local and global basis. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we proclaim the week of June 19 through 23rd, 2023, Environmental Health Week in Sacramento County, and urge all citizens to participate in appropriate celebrations of this observance. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And I'd see if my colleagues have any comments?
Just wanted to congratulate Megan on her pending presidency.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll leave this with you.
Thank you so much.
And no public comment on this one, obviously?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, we'll move on to item 48.
Okay. Item 48 is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing the 100th Anniversary of Boy Scout Troop 55.
Come on up Jim. You know, we got a hat and a pin. Anything from Troop 55? Nothing? Thank you. Thank you for being here. I will, I'll start this out by reading some excerpts from the resolution, then I'll give you a chance to say a few words. Is that okay? And possibly one of your, one of your scouts as well from, from Troop 55. Boy Scout Troop 55 was founded in 1923 and is sponsored by the Kiwanis Club of Carmichael. They are a scout-led troop that works to create opportunities for youth to develop character, serve their community and provide activities promoting physical and mental fitness. Boy Scout Troop 55 serves the Carmichael community by performing flag ceremonies and serves on a multitude of community projects throughout the year. They are a part of Carmichael's history and the fabric of the community and continue their work to instill a service mindset and contribute. We are on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we would like to congratulate Boy Scout Troop 55 for 100 years of dedication to the Carmichael community and throughout the greater Sacramento County region. I'll present this to you. Take a photo and then I'll give you a chance to Levi, okay Levi. Okay Jim, would you like to say a few words?
Okay. Well, I retired from the county, so you all were my bosses. I've been an adult in scouting for 41 years. And I was a scout as a boy also. But most of that was in a different troop, not in this troop. And I would like to give the opportunity for Levi to say something since he's been in the troop longer than I have.
Oh boy. Levi? No pressure.
Well, Troop 55 has been a big part of my life and it's, we've done a lot of service for the community and it's really nice to get this recognition. And it's also been a big part of a lot of other people's lives through the years. And I've only been a small part of that 100 years, but you know, yeah.
Several of the supervisors have been a longer part of that 100 years, but we won't name names. Do any colleagues have any, any comments for, yes Supervisor?
I just would like to commend Troop 55 and all the Boy Scout organizations in Sacramento County. I want to say that I, the, the program through the scouting is, has engaged women and there are a lot of young girls who are engaging and working toward their Eagle Scout qualification. It's a program that not only involves the children, but the leaders put a lot of effort into it and the parents do as well. And so it's, it's a huge effort to grow leaders. And everyone who knows anything in business knows that if you're hiring an Eagle Scout or a scout, you're hiring an individual who has learned about community and how to give back and persistence and commitment and friendship and teamwork and the list goes on. And so to the leaders, God bless you for the work that you do. And to all the young, the young people who go through these programs, you're extraordinary. And I just hold you in very high regard and I want to thank you for, for what you, you do. So thank you. So, thank you.
We are also starting a venturing crew, which includes young ladies.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. Take this. No public comment on this one?
We do not have any comments. Let me double check. Yeah, no public comments.
Okay. We'll move on to 49.
Yes. Is the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District Annual Presentation.
It must be that time of year.
Like I said, if you ever want to empty a room, I guess you just put mosquitoes down and it goes relatively quickly that way. Well, thank you again for the invitation to come out and talk a little bit about what we're anticipating for this upcoming season as it relates to mosquitoes. Obviously, with a tremendous amount of water that we've had over the last, the beginning part of this year, we've seen a number of sources that are starting to breed mosquitoes a little bit earlier than what we've anticipated. So, my name's Gary Goodman. I'm the District Manager for Sacramento and Yolo County. We cover all of Sacramento County, and then we also have a satellite office in Woodland where we cover Yolo County as well. And our goal essentially is to provide effective mosquito control so that, one, in the prevention of transmission of disease, and we do have disease in our areas, specifically West Nile virus, we've had that in our area since 2004. We will continue to have that in our area. West Nile virus is a bird disease. It's carried by birds. It's vectored by mosquitoes. So, a vector essentially is an organism that will take a disease from the host and then transmit it to something else. And so, the mosquitoes are the vectors for West Nile virus of a bird disease specifically. And we have the right types of birds and the right types of mosquitoes here in our area that will continue to have West Nile for us for a long time. But the other aspect of it is, you know, we want to make sure that in the summertime, people can enjoy the outdoors, and that's a big issue as well. And that was one of the main reasons why in 1926, the Mosquito Abatement Act in California was enacted, was essentially from an economic standpoint. Nobody wanted to move to an area if you were going to be inundated with mosquitoes, and of course, disease transmission. At that time and frame was malaria. Luckily, we were able to eradicate that over time. So, we use what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. This goes from a public information aspect of it. We have a very active school program, very active advertising. We go out to a lot of fairs and public events to just try to educate the public as to what they can do to prevent mosquitoes breeding, and then, of course, being, prevent themselves from getting bitten. Because if you never get bit by a mosquito, you'll never transmit a disease from a mosquito. So, a very active program in there. Then we have our surveillance program, and essentially, this is, we set traps out throughout our district, all 2,000 square miles of that, and we monitor those traps for the various populations of mosquitoes. Are the numbers going up? Are they going down? In our particular area, we have about 23 species of mosquitoes. Not every mosquito transmits disease, but all mosquitoes do bite, or at least female mosquitoes bite. Male mosquitoes only feed on nectar and mate with the females. So, the female mosquitoes are looking for that protein in your blood so they can produce their eggs and then start that whole cycle over again. So, our surveillance program picks up traps essentially on a daily basis, brings them back to our office. We count and sort each mosquito that are there, and then, of course, do testing for virus activity, specifically West Nile. Then we have our biological control program. Anybody that's been down in our facility down in El Grove, you've probably seen the number of mosquito fish ponds that we have there. We're the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. We plant about 3,500 pounds of fish alone in just Sacramento and Yolo County, anywhere from rice fields, backyard swimming pools that are being unmaintained, irrigation ditches, horse troughs, wherever they will survive and take care of the mosquito problem for us. So, we're very proud of that program as well. Then we have an ecological management department, and this department works specifically with large landowners, specifically U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Stone Lakes that we have down in El Grove, Vicfazio Wildlife Area, all of those places that have a lot of standing water in the summer, and vegetation interface, Nature Conservancy, CRP, all of those types of things, just making sure that we're working collaboratively on what their mission is, which is typically wildlife habitat and restoration, and making sure that they can put in appropriate, what we call best management practices, to reduce mosquito production on their property. And then, of course, our chemical control. We have technicians that go out into their zones, they're assigned a particular area every day, and they look for mosquito breeding sites specifically. And some of those sites that they look for are examples here on the screen. Some of us are very easy to spot. If you look at a wetland, you look at a rice field, you look at an irrigation ditch, and you see a large field that has greenery in the middle of summer, it's probably got some standing water, and so, those are easy for us to spot. The more difficult things are the things that are in people's backyards, because we don't have the resources to go into everybody's backyard and kind of take a look. So, we really try to employ the public to be able to let us know when you're being bothered by mosquitoes. All you have to do is give us a call. We typically come out, if not the same day, the very next day, to assess the situation that you may have in and around your property. We respond to, again, a lot of unmaintained swimming pools that get calls in from neighbors. Again, we don't necessarily need all the information, we just want to know the location. So, if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, give us a call here. But our big challenge is being able to try to see what is in people's backyards. And obviously, with the recent rains that we've had, a lot of these potential sources that are in people's yards have filled up with water. And so, we ask folks on a weekly basis to go around their yards and just dump out any standing water that they may have. And now, as we're starting to get in the middle of summer, you're going to have people that are turning on their sprinklers and the same type of issue. So, even though it's not rainwater, it's still any water that can fill up these containers. And mosquitoes need about, in the height of summer, anywhere from seven to 10 days to go from egg to adult. So, that's why we want to try to ask people to do that on a weekly basis. So, we are anticipating a very busy season, and we've already started to see it a little bit. There's a number of sources that we've had, based on the rains that we've had early on, that have just filled up sources that have typically been dry for the last seven or eight years that we've been in the drought. And so, this has been a bit of a challenge, and as the weather starts to warm up, we'll start to see more and more mosquitoes production out there. Want to talk briefly just about West Nile virus and what we've seen over the last few years. The last couple of years have actually been relatively low for us in terms of virus activity throughout both the state of California and in our own area, which is great. Again, we're anticipating a bit of a busier year just with the amount of water that's come through, and the number of human cases here last year, where there were just a little over 200. One thing, I just want to make a comment on that, is that these are typically reported cases, and all positive cases of West Nile in humans are reportable, and so, we get information on that. But the vast majority, about 70% of these, are what they call the neuroinvasive form of the disease. So, the general West Nile virus symptoms are flu-like symptoms, things that we've become very familiar with over the last couple of years with COVID, not feeling very well, you know, body aches, temperature, fever, those types of things. Those are very similar to West Nile virus symptoms as well. And so, a lot of times, people know, don't really, they recover within a week or two weeks, and they never go to the doctor and it never gets diagnosed. So, typically, 70% of these human cases that were reported are what we call the more serious form or neuroinvasive form of the disease, and that can lead to paralysis, blindness, and of course, even death. And so, it's encephalitis-like symptoms that happen. And so, we want people to be aware that it can be a very serious disease, and CDC estimates that for every West Nile, for every neuroinvasive form of the disease, there's another 30 to 70 people that have West Nile virus but just don't go underdiagnosed. And so, you're really talking about what we call that potential cases, anywhere from 6,000 to 15,000 people that were suffering from West Nile virus. And one thing I do want to try to highlight is people somewhat minimize the impacts of it, because typically, it's just flu-like symptoms. However, CDPH did a survey when West Nile virus first came to California, and they interviewed folks that were experiencing symptoms of West Nile a year afterwards, and over 50% of those people were still experiencing some level of symptom associated with West Nile a year later. So, it can be a very debilitating and serious disease, and we want people to recognize that and take the appropriate precautions to try to reduce the impacts. Here's a general map of the activity that we had last year in Sacramento County, specifically the red circles are positive mosquito samples that we tested, and then the yellow triangles are the positive dead birds that we had in our area. And so, you can see most of that focused in and around kind of the Arden Arcade area up into Citrus Heights, that type of component, a little bit in the Tomas, not a whole lot of activity in the southern part of Sacramento County, which is a little unusual for us. El Grove is usually a little bit more of a hotbed, and we didn't have that this past year. We have, however, already discovered three positive birds in Sacramento County and South Sacramento County, and we have one positive mosquito pool that we tested yesterday in the Ileton area. So, Ileton has our first positive mosquito pool, mosquito collection for this year, which is a little early for us, and being the beginning part of June and not being really, really hot. So, we're anticipating conceivably, hopefully this is not a clue as to that we're going to have a very, very busy year, but it is early for us. I think I've mentioned this in years past. I said that we have about 23 different species of mosquitoes that are endemic to our area. We're starting to pick up what we're calling invasive mosquitoes, and these are mosquitoes that are not supposed to be here. They typically are prevalent in South America, Mexico, Central America, actually, the southern part of the United States, in Florida, more humid climates. And so, the Aedes aegypti and Aedes albipictus, which is the yellow fever mosquito and the Asian tiger mosquito, are starting to become established here in Sacramento area. So, we found them first in 2019 in Citrus Heights, and we've since found various pockets throughout both Sacramento and Yolo County and other parts of California that have collected these. And the concern with these is twofold. One, they like to be around homes and people, and they like to bite people. And two, they can be efficient vectors of more exotic diseases like dengue, chikungunya, Zika virus. And so, if we get these mosquitoes established here, we have people that come back from endemic areas with these exotic diseases. And so, there's the possibility of local transmission if we have the right mosquitoes that can transmit those diseases. And so, we want people to be aware of this. If you're being bothered around your home, give us a call. Again, we typically come out within 24 hours to assess the situation and give you some advice as to what you should be doing, and also gives us a clue as to where we can set up our surveillance. But the sources that you see, or the pictures that you see on the screen here, are the very cryptic sources of where these mosquitoes like to lay their eggs. And so, they are in people's backyards. And again, from a resource standpoint, it's difficult for us to be able to try to do that. When we do find a particular area, we do go door-to-door, but it takes weeks for us to be able to try to get into everybody's yard to assess where these mosquitoes might be, might be breeding from. So, we definitely need the public's help in being able to identify. If you're being bothered, give us a call.
Excuse me, Gary, Supervisor Ross.
Gary, did you say that different mosquitoes transmit different diseases? So, Zika couldn't be transmitted by our normal mosquitoes here?
Those invasive mosquitoes are the ones that can transmit Zika. The reason why we never had a risk of Zika or dengue or chikungunya in our areas, that our typical endemic mosquitoes that we already had in our area, were not able to transmit those diseases. But these new invasives that we're finding are able to transmit those more exotic diseases.
And they don't transmit them because they don't contract them?
Excellent question. No, they can. So, the process that it goes through is that if a mosquito were to bite, and for dengue, people are the reservoirs, right? So, it bites a person that has dengue, it processes through their system, and then there's a trigger in terms of how they transmit it, it goes through their salivary gland. So, when a mosquito bites somebody, they make a small incision in your skin, they spit into your skin as an anticoagulant so they can suck the blood, and the virus is then in that saliva that they're injecting into your skin.
I was going to have lunch.
Yes, exactly. You're welcome.
I cannot unhear that. I can't unsee that now. Every time I have a mosquito bite, I'm going to think of you.
So, in certain mosquitoes, there is like a genetic break essentially that doesn't allow the virus to go from the midgut or from the transmission when they ingest it to the salivary glands. But in certain types of mosquitoes, they do. In fact, there's a lot of work, if you're, nobody here is really excited about mosquitoes except for me, but there's a lot of brand-new work that's being happening on what we call sterile insect technique, where they're actually modifying the genetic code of the mosquito so that there is that break between the ingestion and it becoming active in the salivary glands. And so, you know, there's some work that's being done at UC Davis, there's some trials being done in Florida and Southern California, those types of things of new innovative ways to try to control mosquitoes. And so, but yes, there's a lot of study essentially of that break. Not every mosquito has the ability to transform from ingestion of the virus to transmission of the virus, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, with invasive species, here's an area of where we've started to find those within Sacramento County. We have a population down in El Grove. Arden Arcade is probably one of our biggest ones, but we found it in Citrus Heights area, parts of Sacramento. And so, you can see they're pocketed around. And these mosquitoes don't fly very far, so essentially, they're being transmitted or transported by us, by people. And that's the bigger challenge. So, whether they're being transported in vehicles, or typically what happens with these mosquitoes is that they lay their eggs in these containers, and then when we move, we're taking those containers with us. And traditionally, for mosquitoes, when they lay their eggs, like in a rice field, they lay their eggs immediately, they start to come off into their larval sources, into their larval stages, and then their pupal stage, and then they emerge as adults. So, as soon as they lay their eggs in water, seven to 10 days later, they're emerging as adults. These invasive mosquitoes are tricky from the perspective is that they lay their eggs in sources that are dry, and those eggs can be dormant for months on end. And so, then they wait for the water to come through in the right conditions, and then they hatch off. These particular invasives were found initially in Long Beach, 20-something years ago, at the Long Beach Port. And if anybody has a lucky bamboo plant, if you know the lucky bamboo, those were coming from Southeast Asia, literally on a slow boat across the Pacific in these container ships. And these mosquitoes laid their eggs in those containers. Then when they came here, they laid dormant, they were sold at Home Depot and Lowe's and garden stores and all those other things, and you brought them to your house, and you filled them up with water to make sure that the bamboo was going to survive, and all of a sudden, that triggered those mosquitoes to hatch off. So, they can last for a long time, and that's the concern that we have, is them getting established in our area. So, you can get more information, we have a website, fightthebite.net. Give us a call if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, 1-800-429-1022. And then, of course, the dead bird hotline, because West Nile is a bird disease, it's carried by birds, there is a hotline. So, if you see a dead bird, you can call that number, or you can go to our website, report it, we'll pick it up and we'll test it to see if it died of West Nile. The other thing I just wanted to mention briefly, you know, repellent packets, I think you guys have all seen this, we buy this stuff by the pallet. So, if there are events that you have in the evening times, especially as we get into the summer with movies in the park or concerts or those types of things, please give us a call. We'll be more than happy to provide these free of charge. We give these out to the homeless centers here as well, because obviously, they're more susceptible as we come into the summertime as being out and active and available for mosquitoes to bite on. So, we definitely want to make sure that the repellent is being used. So, with that, if the board has any questions, more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. And can you please deliver a couple boxes of those to my office?
Absolutely.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the annual presentation. I think it's a great reminder for everyone to heed the fact that we all have a responsibility to help fight the bite here. I wanted to ask a couple questions. As it relates to the rice fields, especially those rice fields in the Tomas Basin, are we continuing to use innovative application protocols such as using fairly large drones to fog the fields?
Yeah, absolutely. We're very active in that area because it's in our, and within our entire district, Sacramento and Yolo County. As you know, rice starts essentially here and then moves forward north, right? And that's our biggest population of rice that is right across the street, literally, from populations of people, right? So, we want to make sure that we're protecting them. So, we're very active in making treatments out there with larvicides, so we treat those fields with materials that essentially try to kill the larvae in their aquatic stage, in the water before they emerge as adults. An adult female mosquito lays anywhere from 200 to 250 eggs at a time. And so, if we can catch them in their water stage, in their aquatic stage, much easier for us to control. And then, obviously, they're not available to bite birds and to transmit disease and virus. And so, we do use drones in and around those areas for some of those treatments, and the progression of, or the evolution of the technology associated with drones, we're excited about in the future as well. Currently, we have a few drones at our facility, we contract out with another outside contractor for that, and we're hoping that they're going to get bigger and allowed to carry a little bit more weight, because you're limited by, you know, they can only fly for as long as the batteries last, or you're having to go through that. But yes, that is definitely an active part of our program.
Great. I typically hear every summer, late summer, from folks in neighborhoods such as Heritage Park about mosquito problems, which, as you mentioned, are, you know, just a few hundred feet from their doorstep on the north side of Elkhorn. So, it's good to hear that we're continuing to deploy drone technology to help keep the mosquitoes down. Are we also putting mosquito fish in some of those checks?
Absolutely. We, as I mentioned, we plant about 3,500 pounds of mosquito fish per year within our area, and the Tomas is definitely, all of those fields get treated with mosquito fish to try to help suppress the populations.
And I assume that your agency works with the local reclamation districts to do all the above?
Yep, absolutely. That's a part of our ecological management program, is it works collaboratively with all of those agencies.
Okay. And then finally, the most important question is, are we going to be able to see Luce on TV again this year?
Absolutely. I kept her out of here, so she, you know, she definitely, yeah, she'll be on TV quite often, I think.
She's an excellent spokesperson for this.
Yes, she does. She does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. So, Gary, one thing, you know, if Fight the Bite, and this is people who are paying attention, I'm sure some people a little bit... I'm sure some people a little bit unnerved about having maybe an outdoor gathering in their backyard, for instance. And without talking about a specific product, what are some of the better systems people could use to, you know, kill mosquitoes or deter mosquitoes from coming into their, you know, backyards if they're having a gathering?
Yeah, I mean, obviously the best thing is don't produce them in your own property, right? So going around once a week, dumping any standing water that you may have, that's going to be your first line of defense. There are some products that are sold, obviously repellent is a great tool to be able to use. If you're going to be out during when mosquitoes are active, put on a good repellent. DEET is the gold standard, but some people don't necessarily like the chemical. There's also oil of lemon eucalyptus that will work as well, it just doesn't last as long, so DEET will last, like 30% DEET will last about three to four hours. The oil of lemon eucalyptus probably lasts maybe an hour and a half, so you just may have to reapply it to make sure that it's still going to be effective. There are some things that people sell.
Yeah, I mean, you've got citronella candles, you've got those Zapper products.
Well, yeah, citronella candles don't work as well, the smoke works a lot better. Mosquitoes don't like smoke, so if you want to have a huge bonfire, then you won't have too many mosquitoes.
Hey, we also serve on the air quality management district.
Yeah, right. So they are a level of effective, but for the most part, just where it's going to be concentrated. And so, you know, you're lighting citronella candles around, it's not going to be around all the time. Mosquitoes are attracted to carbon dioxide, so that's the other challenge that you have with outdoor vents, is everybody's, you know, maybe having an adult beverage, and you get a little bit louder, and you start talking more, and you start kicking out more carbon dioxide, that's going to attract the mosquitoes. There are some traps that we use, obviously, at our district that essentially attract mosquitoes to that. They kick out a carbon dioxide stream, and so they follow that stream to the trap, and that's how we collect them there. If you're going to employ those, and they're sold at some of the home improvement stores, I would recommend you give it to, you know, your neighbor or your neighbor's neighbor so that you attract the mosquitoes to their yard and not yours. But they are effective in how they're used. The other aspects, you know, some of the other things that are sold are just not quite as effective, so the biggest thing, don't breed mosquitoes in your own property and put on a good repellent.
Okay, good, that's great advice. Thank you.
Gary, I didn't realize you'd been to social events with the chair.
No, I was going to say, if I do invite you to something, Gary, what should I?
What should I? Yes, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Okay, no other supervisors with comments? Any public comment on this item?
Do not have any public comments in person or phone, so we'll close that.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much.
And please, yes, I for one would like some of the.
We will have boxes delivered to all of your offices. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Okay. Move on to our hearing items, item 50.
Yes. Item 50 is the 2024 One Year Action Plan Federal Programs Allocation Process Workshop Number Two.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, my name is Stephanie Green. I'm the Federal Programs Manager with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and today I will be presenting the second workshop for the 2024 Annual Action Plan for Federal Programs. And as a reminder, the process for identification of projects started at the beginning of the year with workshop number one in February, where I provided an overview of the process, what eligible activities are, as well as some past projects that have been funded. Following that workshop, SHRA staff met with county staff to identify potential projects and to review them for readiness and eligibility. The purpose of today's workshop will be to present a draft list of public facility and infrastructure projects to be funded with Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds, and to receive input on those projects as well as any input for new potential activities or projects. So as a reminder, we anticipate about 5.8 million in CDBG funds available for the county this funding year in 2024. This slide shows an estimate of how those funds will be allocated among the various programs. Excuse me. We reserved the maximum of 15% of the entitlement for public services, 15% for grant planning and admin, and we work backwards from there to get the balances for the other programs. This year, we anticipate about allocating approximately 2.3 million for the entitlement for infrastructure and public facility improvements. On this slide, we've included a draft list of projects proposed by county staff, and all of these projects have already been assessed for eligibility and readiness. These projects include the North Watt Street Improvements Project. This project is located, excuse me, near three North Watt Safe Stays sites, and will install sidewalk infill, streetlights, and curb ramp and traffic signal improvements. Thank you. The Elkhorn Boulevard Complete Streets Project, this is a project that includes pedestrian and bicycle safety and ADA improvements on Elkhorn Boulevard from Watt Avenue to Don Julio Boulevard. The Floor and Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements Project, which includes bike lanes, traffic signals, lighting, and ADA improvements along portions of floor and road between Franklin and Power Inn. The Rosemont Streetlights Project will install new streetlights in the Rosemont area between Kiefer Boulevard and Taliahoe Drive. The Watt Avenue Complete Streets Project, which includes bicycle and pedestrian improvements, sidewalks, lighting, traffic signals, and bus turnouts along Watt Avenue from I-80 to Roseville Road. And then also, we have the Fruit Ridge Sidewalks Improvement Project, which is ADA improvements to sidewalks at various locations in the Fruit Ridge area. And you can see here, we also include a line item to cover environmental review for those So as a recap, this is an overview of the process moving forward. As mentioned, this is a draft list of projects, and over the next few months, we'll continue to meet with county staff as needed to refine this list with any input received today. Then in October, we return to the board with a final budget and list of projects for approval before we then submit to HUD. So that concludes my presentation, and once again, we welcome any ideas or input that you have.
Thank you, Stephanie, for the presentation. Thank you for all your work at SHRA on this. Wish there was more, right? Because the need is so great. Okay, I'll look to my colleagues, see if there are any comments or questions. Supervisor Hume.
I do have just a comment, and it piggybacks on what the chair just said, that the need is always greater than the resources available, and I appreciate the projects that have been outlined. I think they're spread well throughout the county in the more urbanized areas. However, in looking at the map of the low and moderate income areas, there's a big swath called the Delta, and we didn't have any projects down there. And I know that there's definitely some sidewalk infill projects and some other ADA improvements that would meet all of the qualifications for the program. So in future years, I'll be looking to maybe have some input to get some things down there. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other supervisors with comments. Any public comment?
We do not have any public comments on the phone or in person, so I'll close that.
Okay. Okay, Stephanie, no action on our part, but thank you for the report back. And when will we see you again, then?
So we'll be back around the end of the year, in October.
Okay, thank you very much.
So we'll need a motion on this.
Oh, you will need a motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no motion.
Okay.
The presentation.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, it, sorry.
I'll move to receive the presentation.
I'll take it.
Done and done. All right. Thank you. Okay, move on to item 51.
Yes, same thing on this one, this is a receiving file. But item 51 is the Annual Reports of the Housing Trust Fund, Affordable Housing Ordinance and Home Investment Partnerships Program.
Good morning, Whitney.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Whitney Bonner, I'm the Program Manager in Development, Finance, and Portfolio Management at SHRA. This housing workshop is to review the affordable housing projects and funding that serves as SHRA's annual reporting on two county ordinances, Housing Trust Fund and Affordable Housing And one additional affordable housing funding source administered by SHRA Home for the calendar year of 2022. The County of Sacramento has two development impact fee programs, one for residential and another for non-residential development. The revenues generated depend upon the fee level per square foot of new construction and amount of building which occurs in any given year. The County Housing Trust Fund Ordinance authorizes the collection of impact fees on non-residential construction to fund low and very low incoming housing, low-income housing. The Housing Trust Fund Ordinance was adopted in 1990, and to date, $30.1 million have been collected, plus $11.1 million in repayments from loans made with the funds. In 2022, $610,000 was collected in fees with $442,000 in expenditures. The Affordable Housing Fund Ordinance is an affordable housing impact fee for all new housing developments with the goal of increasing the supply available for lower-income workers. $19.6 million have been collected since 2014, when the ordinance was revised from the earlier ordinance. In 2022, $3.3 million was collected in fees and $6.7 million in expenditures. SHRA administers federal entitlement grants from HUD on behalf of the county. Home funds are used for multifamily housing production or preservation. These funds have hard deadlines for expenditure, and it's critical that we identify eligible projects so that we are never in a position of returning funds to the federal government. County Home generated $3.7 million in entitlements with $685,000 in loan repayments in 2022. There are now five projects under construction utilizing home funds. In 2022, the three funding sources that were just discussed totaled $7.6 million received in fees, with an additional $882,000 generated in loans previously made with SHRA. Loan repayments allow SHRA to reinvest in needed affordable housing. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Whitney. I'll turn to my colleagues, see if there are any questions or comments. Seeing none. Any public, oh, Supervisor Hume.
I apologize, I do have just a general question, and it's not relative to this presentation necessarily, but do we put out an annual report for SHRA as a body?
Yes, we put out, we come forward in about November and do a budget presentation, which covers all the activities, all of the funding sources, projects, everything under SHRA.
Fantastic, I look forward to that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Any public comment on this item?
We do not have any comments in person or on the phone, and so I'll close the queue.
Okay. Well, that was easy, Whitney. Thank you. Thank you for all your work putting this together, and I appreciate everything you're doing for Sacramento County. Okay, that will take us to, let's go to, I think on the agenda, it had us adjourned to closed session, but we will.
Item 52.
Yeah, item 52, we'll do our own ranks right now.
Item 52 is the Own Ranks to the Sacramento San Joaquin Delta Conservancy. The recommendation is for Mr. Hume to make an appointment as his alternate to that agency.
Yeah, I was leaving the building one day, and I found a man outside, and he wasn't wearing a tie, which was unusual, and he may have been in jeans, which was even more unusual, and he had a sign that said, "We'll govern for free." And so I'd like to appoint Don Natoli as my alternate.
Love it. Okay, we'll update the roster and notify the agency. Okay, on to item 53. You are continuing to June 13th, the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to July 11th, Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Civil Service Commission, Human Services Coordinating Council, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Sacramento County Commissions on the Status of Women and Girls, Sacramento County Youth Commission. You are continuing to July 25th, the Building Board of Appeals, County Service Area 4B Slough House, Wilton, Casumnas, County Service Area 4C Delta, the Elk Grove, Casumnas Cemetery District, and Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For the action items on this is Community Review Commission. Mr. Desmond?
I think everything besides D5 continue to July 25th.
Mr. Hume?
D5 would like to reappoint Odette Crawford.
Okay, and then Disability Advisory Commission, you're saying to continue to July 25th?
Chief's recommend continuing that one to July 25th, yes.
Okay.